How much other public land do we have?
That would be disastrous. If a person like, like an hour before you come to this, it'd be like a zombie.
I'm sure the Riverside.
Oh, your buddy from the DNR, yeah.
Uh huh.
He left one step, I did the two. Was he coming in your helicopter?
The state. They are not. They won't be loaded anywhere if you go.
Maybe a while.
Kind of driving around them, yes. All nice is a natural park. People getting lost in.
Natural park.
Yeah.
That doesn't really connect up to the other part.
No.
No, and I was looking at those maps and is it possible to buy the connecting property? Why does anybody even want that?
I don't know if they would, but you know, the problem is the one by the bridge is all, I mean, it's all utilities. We can't just like let that go.
Yeah, uh huh.
Six figures or a million dollars of utilities under there.
I think the one that's privately owned and sectioned middle, that's nice grass.
It's very, that easy as out of the race.
It's nicer grass, it's not wood.
There are no easements.
They maintain it.
Fred, there's no easements on that property, it's all public.
So.
There's no easements.
What would be the possibility of talking to them about something so we could connect them?
There's no easement.
You mean they put, what? Anything's possible.
Well, when they put that stuff in, they'll leave a great lot of it.
When they put stuff in Trumpum there, when they, that was private property and they had to put it in an easement to go through that private property. So there should be an easement to go.
Because this stuff is like old. I mean, the utilities under there, well, I don't know, this is just what, you know, my, I mean, there's. The problem is now we wouldn't be able to get, I couldn't find utilities that are listed on those properties. That there's anything listed besides, you know, that are in some mid that or DNR trust, you know, State of Minnesota Department of Administration. Owns, so if they were publicly owned, you know, they're either right away or DNR, there was no easement. Because if they're publicly owned property, you don't get an easement. But if we, if they get sold, all of a sudden, we don't own them, we gotta go in there, we have a problem. That's why we have to keep at least the one by the bridge.
So why would, why would the DNR and such stuff, now when they got all these thousands or thousands and thousands?
I have no idea. To be honest with you, what the deal is, it's a statutory name, like they held us for long and I, I don't know the whole deal. The one by the bridge, I'm, I mean, we need to keep that one.
That one I know, yeah.
The other one, we, no, that one probably works something.
Yeah, that's, that should be useful in that one.
Yeah, but it's the one by the little arrowhead that we need to hang on to that.
I was surprised at looking at them, they have two maps.
But that, that's kind of, yeah.
I would be surprised if it was.
Yeah. Well, I know, I agree, I think we should, I got it for that bridge, at least we can have it. At least the, the one by the bridge.
Yeah.
I know.
I would recommend that at this time. Let us do the pledge and move on.
Our pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we call the March thirteenth, twenty eighteen city council meeting to order. We do have a forum, we are missing Consular Henke and Consular Mortensen, Engineer Rhine, Attorney Greg, Administrator Boston. And I see no unofficial citizens in the audience, so I guess we don't have any comments, not from you anyway. Any additions or corrections to the agenda as printed?
I have none.
Motion to accept the agenda.
So move on, is that the second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass is consent agenda. Is there anything that could be removed from the consent agenda or do we have a motion to accept it as current agenda?
So move. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move and red line, proclamations, et cetera, there are none. So we go down to engineering, item A, the wellhead protection plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the owner of a public water supply system, the city of Canyon is required to prepare a wellhead protection plan every ten years. The plan comes into parts, part one and part two. Part one was to prepare it on behalf of the city by the Department of Health and that was brought to you in late two thousand sixteen. We're now in the process of developing part two of the plan. The Department of Health cannot prepare that part, so we've been working, we as a city engineering firm has been working with the administrator and public work, excuse me, the utility superintendent to prepare that plan. We've had an initial conference call to kind of get things started and we did a bunch of background data collection, put together a first draft of the plan, got together then in person to review that plan about a week and a half ago. And now we're making updates to that draft based on the feedback we got from Mark and from Wayne. And essentially the process to complete the plan is, there's required steps because there's a public plan document. Once the plan is completed to the satisfaction of the city, it then gets distributed to local governmental agencies in the area for review and a comment period. And that comment period is required to be sixty days long. Once that sixty day period is over, then the city council has to call a public hearing on the plan. And once a public hearing is completed, then the city council can consider formally adopting the plan. And once the city council adopts the plan, that then triggers the submittal to the Department of Health. The Department of Health then does their final review of the plan, make sure they concur with, with the adopted plan. And that can take up to ninety days. So based on where we are right now, we feel we can get the plan wrapped up by the end of March. And if we can get the authorizations from the administrator and from the utility superintendent, then we could distribute it out to the local governmental agencies. And the list of who were required to send it to is set by the Department of Health, based on geographic location. So that would essentially take April and May. We could bring the plan to KMU for their regular board meeting in May. They're not required to hold a public hearing. In terms of Department of Health, the city of Canyon is viewed as the owner of the system. KMU is viewed as the operator and maintainer of the system. So the public hearing that's required at the end of the sixty day public comment period is held by the council. So in the meantime, we can bring the plan to KMU, make sure they're comfortable with the plan, get their recommendation for approval for the, to the city council. And then in June, right now we're targeting that, at your regular meeting in June, which would be June twelfth, we could hold that public hearing. The sixty day comment period would have been completed by that point. And then if you're satisfied with the plan, it could be approved that night, get submitted to the Department of Health and be approved by mid September. So we really don't need any formal action from the council. And it's not necessary for the plan to come to the council before it gets distributed to the local governmental agencies because it comes to you for approval later in the process. So really, I think just for the record, just a motion to indicate your concurrence that, once the city administrator and utility superintendent are satisfied with the content of the plan, that they're authorized to distribute it for the review by the local governmental agencies. I think that would just be appropriate, so we have that on record, that we did discuss it with you tonight, you acknowledged it and authorized staff to, to take the next step when the plan is ready.
Well, that all being said, I would make a motion that we authorize staff to proceed with their wellhead protection plan as expeditiously as reasonably possible.
I had a couple of questions first.
Go ahead.
And mine was, what sort of contaminants have you identified and are any of them considered risky?
No, the part one of the plan found that the system in Canyon is very low vulnerability built. So it's, the city's in very good shape that way. The, the plan, part two of the plan will contain a number of what they call strategies.
Yes.
For the city to use in its operation and maintenance of the system. And those strategies will cover topics such as monitoring, data collection and assessment where, in other words, you'll continue to test your water regularly and report the findings of that. You'll monitor the existence of other wells in the areas. There are some private wells in the area that are currently in use or may not be no, no longer in use, but haven't been properly sealed yet. So you'll monitor those and work with those properties if they want to seal them. Another topic would be contaminant source management, so making sure that you're doing a good job with your sewer system, making sure it's not, you know, illicitly discharging into the soils. You'll look for other industrial users that could be having illicit discharges and keep an eye on that. Public education is another strategy and we actually got some brochures here from, from the Department of Health on, on well owners and how, you know, they can maintain their private wells and how they can have them sealed. And putting these in the, in the rack out by the front door will satisfy one of the strategies that's identified in the plan. So it's, it's those types of things, it's, essentially for the city of Canyon, it's going to be a good housekeeping kind of process because you are very low vulnerability in your system and there were no contaminants really identified on your system.
How, how often do you get some sort of a comment from the surrounding communities?
I don't expect it will get much because there is really nothing controversial in the city of Canyon's plan. We may get some.
Ten years.
Yeah. We do it every ten years, but.
Ten years would be the official answer to that question.
The official answer, so.
I mean, you could go on more often.
This report and do you ever get any sort of a reply back saying, hey?
Never.
No.
I've done three or four of them.
It's pretty rare.
I've never had a comment on them.
All right.
And we do these plans every ten years?
Yeah, you're legally required to, anyone else that, that could potentially be affected, you know, if, if they've got wells and you've got wells and the areas of influence of those wells could overlap or interact with one another, that's where you might get some comments back. But because, you know, your areas of influence don't really interact with anyone else or overlap with anyone else.
We're here by ourselves.
And you are low vulnerability, I don't expect you'll get any comments during the public.
Yeah.
Or agency review.
Those are my questions.
And at the time, we do have a public hearing, there will be representatives of the Department of Health that will be here that night as well to participate in the public hearing. And we're working with, with that person from the Department of Health right now as we prepare the plan to make sure that when it gets to their review period, you know, we've, we've got things well set for it to go smoothly through their review and approval process.
Okay, good.
Okay, well, my motion's standing. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Council.
Twenty eighteen street inspection.
So this is just information, Joe will be going around with Wayne in April and looking at the streets. You know, patch for areas that need patched or crack filling and stuff like that. We anticipate this year we're going to probably utilize more spray patching earlier because spray patching can be applied earlier in the season and later in the season. And you may recall a couple of areas we had to promote in, in late October, last fall, and they did some spray patching. So we're going to do the same thing again this year. I don't know if you have any.
More, it'd be more of a permanent hot hole repair than using cold mix. It seems to be holding up pretty well, we did Fifth Street and C Street on this hall and we've done the alleyway by the VFW there. And it seems to hold up really well, it's still fine, so we can, once it melts off, warmed up a little bit, hit it, worsen it with a spray patch, be more of a permanent fix for us.
Wayne, is there any companies that do that or is there just one company that has a spray?
I just know the one company.
There's probably a couple of different ones that do it, I know the county.
The county rents and the company that we get.
Is it the same one?
Mm-hmm, that's all you're hooked up with. They, they offer a rental, but we don't have the equipment to rent from.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense for us to rent. And the county will do it, they came and did it last two years ago, was it, or?
They had to do a little test.
When they rented, but I don't think it was much different cost wise for us to use them or just have this department do it.
Sure, sure looks like a good idea, long as it's working out.
What are the possibilities to say, put something in the paper or something like that to let people call in and say, hey, we got a, a big hole here or whatever, so that they're getting some feedback in here and maybe cuts down on the time you guys have to spend looking for places to patch?
Yeah, we could, we could probably do that a couple of different ways. No, we could put in a couple of different places, like the, well, maybe the website if I can ever get. The websites between the new, the new one and the old one and the old one, you know, we're having problems. You can see half of it doesn't work and I'm having trouble getting them to respond and I'm going to stop paying them here this month, this doesn't stop. The new one is closed, but anyway, we've got the cable access channel and maybe there's some other places we can, you know, try to just tell people that if they see potholes or whatever, to call City Hall and let us know where they are.
Yeah.
What about on their newsletter when you send out, you tell me this?
Yeah, the next one goes out, is it in April, so we could probably put something on there too.
And perhaps our friendly local newspaper in their report on this meeting could mention that the incident is happening?
Now is timing wise.
Yeah.
It's not, I mean, people could call us now, but really we won't until after winter's over. Right, a little time in there, that's when we, we really have to assess because it's too early, we really can't do much now with them.
No, but you could make people feel good that they.
Yes, they have, they have some input and.
Well, it happens all the time, people, believe me.
Yeah.
They, you guys probably get the same thing, but people tell us, you know, if there's a problem on Fifth Street or Red Wing or whatever, we get that pretty often, so. Yeah, but that's a good idea.
So, all that being said, we can move on to legal, update on enforcement action on accessory structure located behind those I was building on by twenty nine Second Street.
So I've had contact now twice with one of the two owners and he said that they plan on tearing it down. He asked me for the name of some excavator, you know, companies that do demolition, so I got back to him with that. And then somebody emailed us two weeks ago and said they're interested in that building for like maybe a coffee shop. So I put him in contact with the guy just at the end of last week, so I, I don't know if that's going to go anywhere, but anyway. I put him in contact with one of the two owners, so.
So according to the memo, we have to decide if we're going to go ahead with the.
Well, you don't have to tonight, but I'm just saying you could, but I guess I would just, you know, see what happens here and if there is a movement in a month or two, then yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Cable for the time being.
I would say so.
The fact that they say they're making plans to.
I don't hear the building.
No.
Well, they're gonna turn down.
Plans, plans don't always come to fruition, but.
I just hate to start spending more money on enforcement.
Exactly, we don't need to spend money on a pile of waste another month.
Or eleven mullis is like.
A money dip, maybe would be the phrase you're looking for.
That's a good way to put it, yeah.
So then, moving on to those, acts forfeit parcels.
So there's, we were notified on February twenty third by the Auditor's Office, also known as Goodview County Finance and Tax Care Services, that there are two parcels that were forfeited a number of years ago that are still held by the State of Minnesota in trust for local taxing districts. The city, they're requesting that the city take one of three actions. Number one is to approve the parcels for public auctions or sale to adjacent owners, B, request a conveyance to the city for public use, and C, request, or request conveyance to the city for public purpose. If the city does request them for public use or public purpose, there is a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, it has to be paid. Forty seven dollar fee, I believe it's a recording change in, you know, recording status, property owner status. So anyway, the two parcels, you have several or more GIS maps in your, aerials in your packet. And so the first property would be sixty six, one sixty two fifteen. That one, that is more of the, it looks kind of like a, what's the thing you used to put under your pillow? Do you put hot water in it like?
Rubber bottle?
Yeah, it looks like, it's kind of shaped like that sort of, anyway, that one. Both the utilities, or both of these parcels have utilities underneath them. The one that I would pay special attention to is one sixty three eighty, that's that one that's in about three different pieces. Part of it is on the other side of Trendian Road. If you look at one of your, again, from the GIS, there is, if you look at the aerial from the GIS that shows utilities, there are three, and if you include electric, four utilities across that. We also believe there's natural gas across there.
Absolutely.
So I will tell you without any reservation whatsoever that, I guess the best way to put it, it's imperative that the city keeps control of that parcel. It is a worthless parcel as far as being buildable, it's all in the flood plain. You know, maybe in the future, there's some possible recreational use, I can't say anything now, but I think it's critically important that we keep that, that parcel for sure because of the utilities. The second parcel also has a sewer main, I would, I would tell you the same thing with that one, but that one is less, you know, imperative, I guess you could say. Most of that parcel is also flood plain. And so, I mean, again, it's not like a valuable piece of property and, you know, if the city did take control of these for public use, I guess it's not to say that we couldn't, Scott, maybe you'd have to look at this, I wouldn't want to spend a lot of research on this, but could, could we split one of the parcels off and like sell part of it to one of the adjacent property owners?
Yeah, there usually is a way to have that, and again, the, the purpose of getting these is to use for public. If it's to use for parking and utilities, which is the argument we have right now, very easily, that's why you get a lose cost. If it's going to be used or conveyed for something else, there are other steps typically required, they're not as strong, but it is a possibility, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying that if there was some consideration for selling this to one of the neighboring property owners and then keeping where the utilities are, that, that would be a possibility also.
God, I've got a question you may or may not have an answer for. I didn't check this out, but it references statute two eighty two dash zero one. As required under this, they're asking us to take this action within sixty days. Do you have?
Yeah, and they, and they do because what happens is if you go on the public auction site then, and typically the counties will do that and most of the counties I'm aware do it at the end of the year, like October, November, somewhere in that realm. It gets placed on a list of people who've come and bid on it and acquired the properties. It's, it's required by law to be made available to the local municipalities in case they want to acquire these.
Okay.
So yes, there, there is a definitive process.
First part, that'd be before if we offered for sale, they offered the.
Exactly, exactly. And for a public use is what it typically is, there are ways to make it, you know, in certain definitions, public use can be transferring it to other parties like Mark is talking about for development, economic development purposes, that's not what you're talking about right here. That would be extra steps, but it is a possibility, but no, what you're dealing with right here is strictly acquiring for the.
And as, as you said, there is the possibility of you acquire a piece of property for a, a public use somewhere down the road. You know, that public use is not going to happen.
Right.
Then there is, there is a process that you can put on the market, jump through a lot more hoops.
Well, it is, and, and in some cases, it's required to pay more to the county for that, obviously, because we get a reduced rate now. But no, there is a, a step by step process to do well beyond what the statute says here. But the, the idea is, yes, first to the city, then the public for auction after that, if we don't comply.
So basically, roughly six hundred dollars would take care of all of this and one situation down the road where there had to be some kind of legal action taken to acquire a right of way would eat up six hundred dollars real quick.
Oh, absolutely. Anyway, most counties will, will be receptive, the city not reacting within sixty days, but if we can react within sixty days, there's no question whatsoever. So I, I agree with Mark, if you've got the ability to acquire these areas where easements are, or possibly could be, you're much better acquiring right now for the fee you've acquired it for.
So we've got roughly a month, month and a half to reply, and how long does it take to fill out all the paperwork and jump through the hoops?
The hoops aren't substantial, it's a simple resolution that goes initially to make that request and you have to state under the statutory reason for this, which would be public for this for utilities and or future, I suppose you'd say public part or something on that.
Yeah.
As long as you have those and those are required to be stated in the resolution, it should be pretty simple to go forward from there. The state will usually do deed, you give a deed, it is a tax for a deed, which you likely doesn't have clear title, so even if you wanted to convey it to somebody else, there would be other steps that would be necessary for the title as well, sometimes simple, sometimes not. That's, that's one of the reasons many times these parcels go passport here. But the city would control it and that's a significant aspect here. And if there was the ability to transfer it to somebody else and Mark wanted to, you know, look at that down the road and advise you on that, you'd take a look at that, let down the, not, you don't need to do anything to that on that.
Yeah.
But at this point, we don't have a resolution if you can vote on.
So, yeah, what would be the next step, I mean?
Well, it's either bring back a resolution or authorize the use of the standard resolution, which we have done before with those types of provisions in there, it's up to you folks. And what I mean by what we have done before, we have made acquisitions of tax for third parcel in Canyon before, it is a fairly standard resolution.
So can they approve something tonight?
Excellent. Yeah, okay.
So does somebody need to raise their hand and resolve?
And that means?
Okay, I'll do it. Think of all the.
The staff, the standard resolution form to acquire these properties?
Absolutely.
Yes. Thank you.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass, wonderful. Then we move on to old business, update on four eleven Polo Street.
Yeah, you have the summary of that in your packet memo, I would not recommend taking any action on that or responding to that at this point.
What, uh, what is the figure value of that piece of property? What's your, what do you have reasonably?
Well, I, the only thing I can tell you is the, the county has that land appraised probably at about twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand.
Property only.
Yeah, the property only, so, this is about ten percent of that, so it's sort of.
Firstly, I think the counties is.
High.
Very high, very high.
But I think this offer is very low.
You only had one offer so far?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we re-advertise it and then?
Yeah, we're gonna open it, probably not even have a date on it necessarily, and just kinda say it's for sale and we're taking offers and.
Right. Yeah, Mark and I talked about this briefly, and you could go into closed session if you want, I don't recommend it, I don't think there's a need for that. The response to Mark is exactly what he said, just keep advertising it and say this offer is not sufficient, um, you don't have to set a price, you could if you wanted to, but I, I would be telling you.
No.
But yeah, you've got all the latitude on this, however you wanna proceed, but that is a pretty low offer for what you've sunk into it clearly.
Yes, considering the, considering the investment and the size of that offer, I'd see no re and a jump.
And I gotta be honest with you, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere, anywhere near what the county's gotta assess for.
Probably not.
So, that's just.
Let's just wait it on.
Yeah, exactly, good.
Yeah, and the only thing is, is Mark and I, as you say, you're turning a duty valve, if somebody brings an offer like that to bring it before you, so a simple motion to say no, we're projecting to and continuing to offer for sale would be a problem, so how can we respond to that?
Okay. I will make that simple motion.
And I don't make a simple setup. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business. Improve five K run slash walk route for Canyon Senior Living. I'll take your fun away, and I'll make the motion that we approve the route.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
I noticed it's a sprint for seniors. I'm, I'm interested in seeing that.
Not for this day.
I'm not gonna be uniting sprinting.
I believe I will either. So, we have works on possible purchase of a seventy-two inch mower. I mean, if you're anybody on this.
Um, we just kind of, it's time to update our current seventy-two inch mower. Just three bits from the local vendors. We put in the budget this year.
What kind of shapes that old mower into?
So-so.
I mean.
It's starting to show a date, um, the mower actually throwing this full over power to the size of this. It'd be nice to get, these mowers here, um, I think right now it's twenty-seven horse, and these mowers are all thirty-one horse.
So, all these mowers, apples to apples?
Yep, seventy-two inch, thirty-one horse, um, mower.
Are they all with the same?
Same belts and whistles.
The deck, pretty much all is commercial deck?
Yep.
You stuck a lot of money in that old mower yet?
Starting to.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead with John Deere.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Same new mower.
That's yours.
Actually, I was kinda surprised that the John Deere was the cheapest. So maybe it's Deere.
And, and the spread between the John Deere and the Toro, that was truly shocking, you know?
Yeah.
The other two were relatively close, but that's a big John.
The Trendians came in very close to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, actually considering the difference in the Trendian, the other two are almost the same. Updated emergency management plan.
This is just a, it's just a formality, but we just updated the contact information and dates and whatever, so, uh, it just needs to be formally adopted by the council.
Now, I'm turning to reading, I'll make the motion that we adopt the updated emergency management plan.
And I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
That passed.
Some kind of language was in there for eight or forty-seven to where they are.
Yeah. That's probably a different.
And then we move on to considering the temporary waiver of commercial building permit fees.
This is just for information, but Doug, I think you brought this, or sent me this, and asked if the EDA, the council could.
So they won't be able to find?
Talk about it, this is really more of a council thing when it comes to building permits fees and.
Right, look closely.
And, you know, whack a sack fees and all sewer and water hookups, all that kinda stuff. Um, so, I guess I wouldn't necessarily say too much tonight, but I wanted to give it to you guys before Doug, who's back in April, wants to talk about it.
If you read that entire article, you see there's some pretty substantial differences between their situation and ours. For one thing, the fees they're forgiving are mostly fees that the city itself is setting. And also, they have a local sales tax. Big difference there.
Yeah, it's a lot bigger community and they have much, much bigger tax base.
They can afford to, okay, we'll let you have these inspections for free, and well, didn't have your customers on the sales tax down the road for years, we don't have that option here.
Right. And I wasn't sure how much our commercial permit fees were, but I wouldn't think it'd be any company that would rush in because we weren't gonna charge them that, that fee.
Right. But it would be a direct cost to the city.
Yes, uh-huh.
Who's got to pay the billings, but.
Right.
At this time, I, I don't see it as a.
Cable look for.
I think one way to look at this is kinda with that new business part.
Precise.
Or when that gets more online and that could be, you know.
It might be, might be sensible to consider them, and there's no reason that we have to, at this point.
Right.
Make a blanket, okay, we'll forgive these forever to everybody down the road if it becomes appropriate, you can consider that. Uh, Canyon Country Club's liquor license renewal. So, okay, you got it, I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Approved. Interfund transfer of three hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars on Fund Two-O-Age Fire Hall Project, Defund Three-Two-Two Fire Hall Debt Service. And this is the excess money that was financed and not required.
Correct. And it was turned around and just paid back, you know, so it was just the remainder of the two point nine that was taken out for the construction, and so that's what was left, and that just basically paid back that temporary bond, so it's, it's just a pass-through, it's just a bookkeeping thing.
Yeah.
And they wanted to be shown in, um, a different, they want it to be classified differently that's related to most, too, so.
I'll be terrible. I'll second that.
Favor?
Right around, all right. Aye.
Okay. And now, since our guest arrived in timely fashion, we can move on to discussing possible prairie planting on Mowbray Hill area.
Sure. I'm not sure, do they get a copy of?
Yeah, they will.
So, my name is Jake Froyen, um, I'm foregone parable for DNR forestry, my position is a cooperative forest management forester, so my job duties is community outreach, private landowner and outreach, education, nonprofits, generally kind of lesser, people that are lesser served than a typical DNR, state land forester. So, in my pretty regular day-to-day work, I work with different municipalities, cities, and look at some potential natural areas. Wayne gave me a call because of the Mowbray Hill area between Mowbray and Hill Road and Highway Sixty, it's a kind of a steep, open area, and there's not much done with it. Wayne's been mowing it, it's pretty steep, he felt it was a hazard to mow, and calling me, wondering if I had any suggestions as alternative to that. My background prior to being a DNR forester is I worked for a private company doing prairie restoration work, natural resource management on the, on the private side, so I've done a lot of projects like this, um, situations of that area. So, what I suggested, and I, and I graduated from Canyon here, I've driven by this about five or so times, so, I've always thought it'd be a good location for a native prairie planting, and so what I, that's I wrote up a proposal to Wayne, or a general project, general project plan, informational plan, about instead of having that as moat turf and just kind of brushy area to do a revegetation or convert vegetation to a native prairie planting, something that'd be a little more attractive for people driving by, something that wouldn't, that you wouldn't have to be out there mowing, and something that might be a little more ecologically appropriate for the site, too. So, part of this proposal that I wrote up outlines some of the steps, some steps to take as far as what would need to be done, I talked to Wayne some over what I thought some of the equipment needs might be, he thinks that he might be a little light in, like a small tractor, a disc, some of the equipment needs for it, so what I wrote in there was suggested contacting a few different private contractors that are in this line of work, I think I gave him a list of five or six maybe on there, to have them write up their version of a proposal for this project, and give you prices, and then I'd also suggest having them, so you're not comparing just on price, also a quality proposal, what you're, what you're getting, that what you find is there's, price range could be really big, um, hun, you know, hundred, two hundred percent price difference from one contractor to another, but of course they're providing different things in their mind, too, so it's good to have someone to write up what they plan to do and, and get an idea of what a project like this might actually cost. Some of the aspects I think the, the city can probably handle on their own, and then as far as my involvement, I'd be happy to help out with any consulting, um, throwing around some ideas and stuff like that, but that's, I'd be coming at it more as a consulting side, and some of an expert has done quite a bit of these projects. So, we wanted to bring it to, I'll just bring it to you folks to, and introduce you to the project, and then see what the potential were, something like this might go if it gave you traction.
Once, uh, the prairie grass was established, uh, what would you need to do to maintain it? I mean, can't you just set it on fire like a, a lightning storm would set the prairie on fire?
Sure, so, kind of even backing up a little farther, the, the steps to go about revegetating this would be to eliminate the existing vegetation that's there, um, through herbicide application, some light disking, working, working the site, and usually I recommend doing that a process of two to three times, that way you consume whatever weed seeds in the soil, so if you can get that out, get a cleaner site, you're gonna have better long-term success, 'cause weeds are an issue and maintenance are an issue no matter what the landscape is. So that process of site prep could take the better part of a growing season, sometimes I recommend people starting a project in the late summer or early fall, continuing the site prep into the spring and then seeding in late spring, early summer. Because it's perennial vegetation, it's slow to develop, two to three years before it'll really be recognizable as a wildflower or native prairie planting, so in the meantime, it does require some maintenance, usually that first growing season, two to three mowings on the site, that's usually done with like a, a flail type mower is ideal, something that'll chop it up and won't windrow it, because of the steepness of the hill, from my experience, I've mowed a lot of sites like that, you get what you can, you know, with the tractor, so it's just going up and down, taking it easy. Contractor I work for, we had a lot behind mower that we'd be able to mow part of that, too, so there's certainly ways to get some of it mowed as far as maintenance. Down the road, you're gonna have issues with catalysts, so, and any other noxious weeds you might have, so there's gonna be a certain amount of maintenance always involved on, on any sort of native landscape. As far as the burning question, prescribed burning is, is recommended and very normal practice for native prairie plantings, and even in built landscape like that is, because it is so well-contained, the complexity level, the risk level's really low, I would say, and usually you do those on a rotation of about five to six years, you burn in the spring and clean it up, you get some weed control, you get a biological response, you know, rejuvenation of vegetation that way. So, you know, it's certainly, people say it's no maintenance, there's, there's definitely maintenance on something like that, um, I don't know.
You have to call the buffalo, didn't you, maintain it for us?
Yeah, that's a whole nother thing, city can get hurt about.
Yeah.
Wayne will take care of him.
I've got a question, I've got a question, though. This is a fantastic idea, 'cause it is kind of an eyesore, I know it's a big pain in the butt, but what about the cattails, the wetland, I mean, that wetter than heck, can that be tiled out, so?
What, because I think it seems like there's a spring or there's some drainage there that's definitely wet, so, um, any contractor with experience with this and anyone that would tend to proposal, I would expect them to propose seeding a wet, like a wet meadow, wet prairie type mix in that area, too. If you can, you can match the vegetation type to fit the soil types and the landscape. That hillside, if I were writing a plan for it, I'd probably have three different vegetation types, I would have what we call a short dry, kind of along the road edges, the hilltops where it's drier, and that tends to be, um, grasses and flowers that are around the knee-high height, and then as you get into some heavier soil areas, you can transition to what you think of more as a tall grass, prairie-type species that can tolerate the better soil conditions, and then in those real wet areas, there's some wet, wet meadow, wet prairie grass, and mix that are appropriate for that as well. And if there's some areas that maybe just there's constantly standing water and stuff, may opt to just go around that little patch and, and leave it be rather than disturb it and.
It's a bad enough issue to work after a patch.
Yeah. It's a big cattail patch, it's getting bigger every year.
Yeah, it's a matter of size, if it's small, that's one thing, but.
Yeah, you know, but it's, it's one of those deals where you just kind of take it over and, I, it's, I think should be addressed at the weather.
You know, I think, from, from my experience with situations like that, I think you could reduce the cattail size if not eliminate the cattail size, now there'll probably be cattails popping up there forever, the soil obviously supports it, but providing more diverse mix of species to kind of fill some of those voids, the cattail has its competitive advantage on, right now it would certainly help, um, you know, and I think you could probably shrink that overall size, and like I mentioned, there's a spot that's, you know, just really soupy and maybe not worth even opening up that issue, you can kind of tighten it up, leave a small area, and, and work around that, that's something, but that's something the contractor would have to decide, or somebody that's doing the scene would have to decide and they really, really got into it and evaluated it closely.
Are there a lot of contractors that would be interested in, in bidding on that? It seems to me like it's kind of a small area that they wouldn't want a job that small.
You know, with any sort of private industry, you know, they, that's their decision is how much they're willing to do it for. As far as contractors in the area, there's one that's based out of Randall Prairie Restorations, there's another one that's based, I don't know. There's another one that's based out of, one owner's in Dennison, the other one is just north of Rochester. Is a global forestry, I think prairie land professionals who can get two things going together, so they're pretty close. The Minnesota native landscapes are up in the Twin Cities, applied ecological resources are in the Twin Cities. These are ones to have off the top of my head.
And and this is a uh two, three, four-year contract that we would have with them to uh develop it and maintain it?
Um or typically, what I would, what I would have is have them write up a proposal or bid just based on site prep and installation, and then as far as maintenance needs down the road, most of these contractors have maintenance ability. Or I'd be happy to meet with Wayne or somebody a few times and give them some pointers. It's, to me, it's fairly, fairly simple, a little bit of backpack spraying. They would be able to get some people around up to do a burn every five, six years. Some some of the mowing might be, you know, depending on the equipment limitations, there's a way to get it mowed or not, you know, that's something you can contact and that per, or that plan that I wrote for Wayne, what I would recommend is have them give you like a per mowing price, because you never know, it might take one mowing, it might take three mowings, depends if you have a wet year or something, so it's nice to have a kind of per mowing price if that's something after it's installed, that's a for sure thing, it's, it will need to be mowed a few times, so.
Is there grass for this at all?
I told uh Wayne too, and we tried to check into it, I don't have anything through DNR, but because of MINDA ownership and there's being on right-of-way, there may be an avenue there for some sort of grant, something we'll look into more and talk to MINDA, because I know they're getting, MINDA gets pressured to use native vegetation wherever it's appropriate.
I did check with the county for some order, and it says it's not ag land, there's no grant line there.
So I I hate to even venture a guess and speak for somebody else, what what an install on that would would cost. But I would say, you know, on the on the low end, I would, just guessing, probably in the range of maybe three thousand dollars. The high end could be three times that, depending on their interpretation of it. That's why I think it'd be best just to get some some different bids on it, or if you, you know, think it's something you wanna try in-house, but you made it sound like it you might be limited by some of the equipment needs.
So do you get involved in wetlands?
My my specialty, I stick with forestry issues. This one, a little bit of special case because I have a real strong background with with prairie landscapes, and I talked with Wayne about just some other small, different vegetation issues and and things that might be, some recommendations or ideas around town. So this is getting altered a little bit, but it it definitely fits in with my regular scope of work, but as far as wetlands, wetland water issues, I'm far from an expert on that and probably not your best hope.
It's one of those things that that is definitely called, classified as a wetland there, and I think uh we should try to move forward and uh, you know, cover all the bases.
Mm-hmm, and with the this restoration work, I've done a lot of projects like this, I've never run into an issue because you're not, you're not draining, you're not excavating, you're not changing it, you're not damming it up, you're, you're not changing the nature of it, you're changing the vegetation of it. And you're managing the vegetation in an improved manner, so I've never heard of it being an issue, not to say that something could come out of the weeds, um but.
That's good, good to hear.
There's nothing that I'm aware of that would be an issue on that.
So what you're really asking for here is a motion, go ahead and see if you get some bids on it.
Yeah, I was just kind of um looking to see if it was a favorable idea, but I think it's worth a lot of checking into. I really do, I think it's, I think it's coming into the city, it's it is kind of a, I know it's tough to maintain. But it's starting the whole deal, it's 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 really steep, it's dangerous to mow, and it's it's wet all the time, and the mowers just slide and you see them recently.
And the best possible job you can do, it does not look good anyway.
Exactly.
They try, they try.
They they try their best, because of what it is, it's.
And the what, the 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 cattails are, it's spreading out, so.
Okay, you look at that a lot more than I do.
I do, it's it's an eyesore. And I.
I'm not offended by cattails.
You know, like anything else, too much is too much.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I think it's well worth looking into, and I would uh, if it worked out well, would like to expand the idea. See other areas and so on.
I'll keep pursuing it.
Yes.
You know, just some kind of neighboring cities that North Northfield has probably twenty-five or thirty of these type of plantings. Some of them are stormwater retention ponds that they've vegetated around, although some of them are parks, but Northfield has been using native vegetation as part of their landscapes around the city for probably twenty years now, and they've got a pretty aggressive program on it. And so there's, there's a lot of different municipalities that are getting into using native vegetation in their, you know, in their landscapes and it's an alternative to just mowing them.
And as people drive by, would they say, oh, look, there's a native prairie grass there? Or would they just drive by and, oh, it's just grass?
You know, it's, it's one of those things where you got, you got ten, nearly ten percent of people that aren't, no matter what you do, they're gonna be happy with it, and ten percent that no matter what you do, they're gonna hate it, and then you're just dealing with people in the middle of the.
Yeah, uh-huh.
I think from my experience in the industry, people definitely become more aware of it. You know, it used to be when you do prescribed burn, people would come out and yell at you and wonder what you're doing, and now nobody seems to care, everybody knows what prescribed burn is. If you say you're doing a native planting, people have a pretty good idea of what, you know, the native prairie.
You can get this established three, four years down the road, when things start to really run their life cycle, and you're going to have certain times of year when you are gonna have people going, wow, yeah.
You will. But that being said too, your, that site has a potential for some weed issues, just looking at the site history, soil history. So you're not gonna wanna skip on your site prep, if somebody proposes to come in and hit it with roundup and run, throw some seed on it, you know, that's, that's setting yourself up for failure, you're gonna definitely wanna invest in proper site prep, potentially erosion.
That's another downside, there, whatever you apply at the top of that slope isn't gonna stop at the bottom head gullet.
And that's with the proposals too, I would recommend contractor write in their recommendations for erosion control. Could be as simple as, at a minimum, I'd say, seed it down the oats or wheat at the same time, and maybe a few rolls of erosion blanket or some erosion logs in some areas that are, you know, look like they really take a lot of channeling. It's it's something that'll have to be explored for sure, the erosion issue, while it's while disturbed. Once again, you know, you've you've got a way better road system than anything that's there now.
I think this is a project where if you're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right, and I I think it's gonna, it's probably gonna cost a few dollars, but I think what's the order is that.
It's gonna cost, yes.
But uh I don't.
What we're doing right now costs too.
That's what I say, I think.
I think in the long run, it could be saving us money.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Maybe you want me to mow her.
Maybe not put so many hours on the mower and keep it going longer.
Thanks, Jake.
So now I don't think we need an official uh motion.
Just to go ahead.
All I can say though, I can see if this works out, I can see other areas in town that we would be. Stand in this.
Possible.
Well, there's a few other areas we talked about, some different types of grass, like the normal stuff or all the lagoon.
You know, areas where, you know, maybe you can't have a real deep root system for a liner, something that's maybe a little more shaded or an area where you're not gonna be able to get a burn on it or has the potential for some other reason, you might want a different type of mix, or something we talked about too, is called a no-mow grass or eco grass. Are some names for it, it's a, basically it's a mix of fescue grasses that are designed to be mowed once a year.